Okay, let's call to order the regular town board meeting, town Lloyd board meeting for August 16, 2023. And we'll open it with Councilman Ock Moody leaning us through the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Lenny. Okay, we'll start off tonight, we're gonna jump the agenda just a little bit here, which we normally do so that the chief can go back out and fight crime. We're gonna go straight to Resolution C, which is a resolution to hire John Tornello, who's sitting right standing here now, as a part-time dispatcher at 9:20 per hour, with a start date of August 17th at the recommendation of Chief James Janzo.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carried four to zero. Welcome to the team, congratulations.
Congratulations, best of luck.
Okay, we'll go back up to the reports now, and we'll go to the liaison reports. We'll start off with Councilman Ock Moody, and you have one, two, three, four, four reports. So you start off however you want.
I would like to concede my time for the beautification committee, Ms. Plavcek. Ms. Goder to talk.
Okay. The beautification committee's been very busy, if you've noticed around town. Thank you. It's fine. The beautification committee's been very busy, if you've noticed around town, there are some hanging baskets. And thank you to Walk Hill View Farms, Peter Ferranti, especially for the beautiful flowers. Next year, we have to get the baskets to him a little bit earlier so that the full basket arrangements can be hung properly. We are also doing adopt a spot, and I believe that Craig Trunks has spoken to the board about the adopt a spot, and that's coming, that's still in progress. The letters have been going out, Craig has spoken to the landscapers, many of the landscapers about what that is going to entail. So that's coming along. The watering of the plants, thank you to the town for purchasing the gator. The plants all along in the hamlet have been watered, and they're growing, and we're not having a problem. We are trying to get more volunteers to help us with the weeding and the planting. There's only three of us, and so it gets, we are a little busy with that. Holiday decorations, we've been looking at holiday decorations from various companies. We're trying to make it simple because to, we've been consulting with Franco Fonsa from grounds department, and the consensus is not to put any more attachments on the lamp posts. And to hang anything, we have to be mindful that to hang anything without an attachment would, you can't keep it from swaying. So we're going to put roping around them and order commercial-grade battery-operated lights because there's not enough, there's no electrical outlets on all of the lights. So we're gonna go battery-operated, commercial-grade, and lights, and wrap them around each of the poles. So we're looking into that, and we're also going to take off the white lights that now exist on all of the trees because the, they've been on there for a while, and they're just, they're just old. So we're going to rewrap them, we're gonna order commercial grade. And there are some electrical outlets at the base of the trees. I've approached the Rotary to see if they would help us with the financing. I spoke to Christine Giangrosso, she's gonna speak to the Rotary. And I've also asked them if they would help us with the wrapping because we're obviously only three, and we need all hands on deck. I might even approach some members of the board for their help. Volunteer list, we are trying to get more volunteers on our committee. We are a committee of three, we have a list. We've thought of having a volunteer night where we could call people and ask them if they would like to come in so we can explain what our committee is about. We're finding that telephoning people and explaining is not, not as, you just can't do it on the phone, it's better to do it in person. So we're trying to do that. We are also in the process of purchasing planters, 24-inch terracotta planters to put in various positions at the corners of, the corner, the corner of Brenney's, Churchen Vineyard, Maine and Vineyard, because there's really nothing there. And in those, those planters will be used through all the seasons. We could put flowers in, and then mums, and then put small trees in, wrap them with holiday decorations. Oh, October 7th, we are doing a scarecrow project. We have talked to the clerk, we've asked permission to have it at Tony Williams Field. So October 7th, we are scheduling a scarecrow event where we're going to publicize and invite families to come in, and each family will make a child-sized scarecrow. And once that's completed, we would like to hang them and attach them to all of the lamp posts and the trees in town. We're gonna take a picture of the family completing them, give the family their picture because I don't believe legally we can post the picture without the family's permission. But we're going to have each family write their name on the back of the wooden stake, and then with their permission, put all the scarecrows up in the village. And we're hoping to do this October 7th. We haven't publicized it yet, we're in the middle of making up the flyers. So we're gonna be working on that. That is our event that we're working on right now. And then, of course, we're working on the 2024 budget. So that's about it, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, thanks for your diligence.
The flowers, the flowers look beautiful in the village, by the way. The girls really did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lenny, I mean, yeah, you can continue, Lenny, with Highland Park landing and your other items here.
All right, as far as the landing goes, just about everything that can be done for right now is done down there. We're trying to get with Michelle Hinchi to get her to come back, and we'll do an unveiling and a ribbon cutting. There's a little bit more plumbing work that needs to be done downstairs, but we're really close with all of that, and that's where we're at. We, we've had some vandalism, as far as somebody marked up the Bob Shepherd plaque. Somebody pried off one of the plaques from Troy's Autobody. They also took off the plaque from the Highland Teachers Association, which is the second time. And whether they threw it in the river or whatever, that one I can't find. So anyway, there's still a couple of names that are spelled wrong on a couple of the plaques that, they're in the process of being corrected. So that's, that's kind of about it right now for that. Wanna go to rail trail?
Yeah, yeah, go straight through your stuff, sure.
Turn my time over to Mr. Belizzi.
You're good at delegating stuff, huh?
The past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of storm damage through the town along the trail. I wanna thank parks and highway for their cleanup of it, they do an excellent job. Again, the roads come first, and then we get to the trail and keep it safe. As I mentioned before, we won a Hart Smith Hudson grant for $5,000 for the community to participate in painting various objects that will be hung along the trail for a while, then given back to them. Our first meeting is Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Pavilion in 101 New Pauls. So people are welcome. We had a great article in the Southern Oster Times, which I'm sure will help with participation in that. And then I thank the police department and the town, because we're moving forward on a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think you still have the planning board, Lenny.
I would turn my time over to our building department, he's here this evening, and I thank you.
I agreed to this, since I missed the workshop, you know, I got your back, Lenny. So planning board was actually pretty busy last month, we were here for quite a long time. The villages is still under review, we're, the planning board is reviewing a phasing plan now to figure out, you know, which pieces come first. Just so we all remember, the light will be the very first thing, which is, you know, a matter of safety. So I'm not sure where we are in terms of proximity to a decision, but at least the phasing plan is, we think, in a pretty good shape for tomorrow night, where the workshop will be here at 5:30.
Did they get that, the sidewalk plan completed?
The sidewalk plan has been completed, but we don't have DOT yet. I do know that the supervisor has spoken to DOT on that and other matters, and I've been in the loop on some of those discussions via email. We think that the DOT permit is close, closer than, we've heard that before, but we actually think we're close now. The final comment went out, there's not much more left to do.
Yeah, I think they, actually they went through, because I have been involved with them, they actually sent the last comment back last week, they met with DOT again, and they put in all the, you know, once you get through all the comments, you put in stuff you require for a permit, like the workers' comp insurance and
The fee schedule, stuff like that, yeah.
And the schedule, and they sent that to them along with the actual check for the permit last week. So I imagine normally with DOT, that's a week, two, three weeks normally, so I think,
Fingers crossed.
You know, end of the month, beginning of September, they ought to be issuing the permit.
Yeah.
Because they had no additional.
Yeah, I mean, and it's already been conceptually approved, now it's just the details, and we think we're very, very close. One, the other big project, there are two other big projects, it's sort of in the agricultural section, 180 South Street, which is the old Plasma Co. building. That is, in my opinion, close to a decision. Planning, the planning board will likely close the public hearing, not tomorrow, but the following week. The comments were, you know, the regular ones, noise, traffic, things like that. The applicant has agreed to do remediation things for those, stormwater is in hand. And then Papino's Food is applying for a lot line revision out on Station Road. And he also wants a site plan, he wants, actually build the same building out the back over the old slab. My opinion, as the building inspector, the old slab is probably gonna have to go, but he is interested in that. And if anybody, I know some of you asked me, he is working on the front of the building, there was a little snafu on that. He spoke to me at a planning board meeting and said that we have to do some work on the front of the building, we're gonna do some siding work, and he took off the front of the building, which is partly structural. So if anybody gets any phone calls on that, it's in hand, we got it, he's got a building permit, we're all good. A couple of short-term rentals, and Silver Gardens got a subdivision extension, that's the project Jarentines up behind Hannibal's. Any questions on the planning board?
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome, I got you.
Thanks, Dave.
And in case anybody's interested, before we go on, tomorrow evening will be a big evening here at the planning board. Falcon Ridge is coming back. We have some people that are fighting over a building that's going on Max Lane. Let's see, a couple of apartments that aren't really apartments yet are trying to be legalized on Holly's Corners Road. Randy Romeo right over here, he's coming back, and we got a couple other things. But the big ones are Falcon Ridge and the villages, they'll be in here. So anybody like to watch and listen in, we'll be here. Or come. Thank you.
And that's 5:30 tomorrow, planning board, right, the workshop? Okay, thanks, Lenny, thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll move to Councilman Guerrero, they start with the UCC, Mike?
There was no meeting, so I'll skip over to the VBA meeting. There was a public hearing held for 16 Washington Street. The applicant was seeking a variance for four units on 1.04 acre lot, and it's a R and a quarter zone. There's a house with an apartment, and then there's a garage, and they want to put an apartment downstairs. So the public hearing set for that. And then there was the, on Orchard Lane, applicant was seeking to put a garage in his front yard. They left the public hearing open, they still need some more information, and that'll be it.
Thanks, Mike. And I do know, and I don't know if you talked to Neil, but Neil will actually, Neil Curry, will actually be on our agenda on September 6th at the workshop for that grant that he got.
Okay.
And updating us on the smart climate thing that we did back last year. So he'll be on, on the 6th, he and I have gone on to the website and updated everything. So I think he wants to give us an update. Okay, we'll move on to Councilman Freno, you have the events committee and the lights and ambulance, John.
The events committee, I don't have anything to report on that. The Highland Fire District, they had a busy month. Last month, they had 55 fire alarms dispatched. Average firefighters per call was 12, highest number was 23. Total number of apparatus responses, 115. Man-hours for alarms, 437. Man-hours for meetings, 43. Man-hours for training, 153. And man-hours for miscellaneous events and activities, 85. So total of 718 volunteer hours from the Highland House Company. And if you want that Maribel, you can have that. The lighting district, getting a little frustrated with Central Hudson, but I understand they've been quite busy lately, so. There's a couple of lights on Merritt Avenue that we reported out, and I submitted documentation. They, as of yesterday, they haven't been repaired. The one light that needs to be connected in Bridgeview, that work order is still pending. And I understand that there's a couple lights on Vineyard Avenue, and the guy is getting, getting the information for me, pole numbers and stuff, and I'll submit that. The other one that's kind of hot is up in Mountainside on Vista. I got a call last week, and he, a gentleman that lives there said three of the lights on Vista were out. And apparently he walks his dog late at night, and he said it's unsafe. And, and we went around with Central Hudson, they were out there and said, well, we don't have records that we, that these poles are on the contract with the town. We did a little research with Dave Barton and Dave from Mountainside. They are town-owned poles. So I then, I then reached out to Mike Bragg, he sent a crew out there today because apparently that whole string is out now, it's not just the three lights. The string on Vista going into the turnaround. So I didn't hear back from Mike Bragg, but I know, you know, he did tell me he was going out around 2 o'clock today. So hopefully that's taken care of. The Pavilion, are we gonna talk about that? Do you want a little update, and then? We'll wait for it, okay. And the reports.
The Lloyd Community Development Committee.
I'm sorry, what, ambulance?
Oh, you forgot ambulance.
Okay. Unfortunately, the ambulance report is not, is late again, so I don't have a copy of it. But I, I do have a list of concerns that I shared with Dave, I documented. I'm seeing things that, it's not a degradation of service, but it's a concern, that they're not as responsive in many areas as they were, their documentation's not as clear. Unfortunately, there was a couple of responses where they had to go out of Lloyd to get ambulance. All telltale signs that things are not going in the right direction. So I, I shared the list with Dave, he reached out to the principals of Empress. We don't have a meeting scheduled, they responded right away. But next week, we're going to have a meeting, address the concerns, and also they told us they would have an estimate for services for next year as we go into budget season. So more to come, meeting to be scheduled next week, and address some of these concerns. Thank you.
Any questions on that, from anybody? From the board, okay. Anything on events, John? No, you skipped, I don't know.
No.
Nothing on events report, okay. All right, Lloyd Community Development Committee, again, this is our, this is the revolving loan committee. And I think I mentioned last month or at one of our, maybe it was at the workshop, that we've updated all the bylaws, we've accepted them, and they're all in place now. And then the next step was to start marketing the program. And Margaret put together a nice little, kind of one-pager on it, that I did a dry run today at the Highland Rotary, and it was very well received, very well received. So, you know, we gave them the flyer, we gave them all, we handed them out, we gave them applications. And I think the next group we go to is the Highland Business Association. And then we're just trying to keep hitting these groups, and we'll start publicizing on the website. But it was very well received at the Rotary, so I was glad that Liza Mackey from, from the Sawyer Savings, who's on our committee, recommended it, she's a Rotarian, and it was very well received, so. I appreciate that. That's it for me, we're gonna move on to old business. And I noticed we left Tilson Talk off of here, Tilson Talk update. So let me give you where we're at right now on Tilson Talk. This was the week, Monday and Tuesday, we were gonna tie in the new 18-inch line, the new 12-inch line, new 10-inch line. So for the last two, three days, we have been trying to, we did line stops to stop the water, you know, so that we could tie them in. And we did the line stops, and water was still backflowing through the pipe. So for three days, or two days, Monday and Tuesday, everybody's been digging, looking for the phantom pipe where was backflow, where water was coming through. Because some of the plans, as you know, were built a long time ago. We even called Dennis Larryos, he gave us hand-drawn plans from 1975. We searched, we started digging some more today. And then by the end of today, we found it was not a phantom pipe, it was the brand-new $50,000 insert valve that they put in the 18-inch line a month ago that wasn't working properly. That's now resolved, the subcontractor came back, put in a new valve, and tomorrow we'll do the actual tie-in. So that will finish us as far as the water line tie-in, which was the major portion of the water. So getting through that was good because we were chasing the ghost with it. It's unfortunate, but we've done that. They're also putting in, they're pouring the footings this week for the new piers. And then we expect the piers to actually get put in in late September, early October. And that's the piers that the road sits on that goes across the Twoskill. So some exciting stuff there, it's still, as I've said, it's still an inconvenience for a lot of people. I personally have a bird's eye view of it, see it every day, I see the work every day. And, you know, I appreciate the work, it is a big job, and they're working to get it done. And as I said before, I think everybody will appreciate it when it's done. The other old business we have on the agenda is 69 North Road. And Dave, you wanna talk about that, and then we have a resolution later in the meeting? We can go through, we can go through it now?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Sean, for getting the resolution down. As you all know, we've talked about 69 North Road several times. It actually originally came up when we dealt with nine commercial. The owner of the property, the male half of the property is in a nursing home, and according to the daughter who we have contact with, I'll send you that email, just so you have it for your file. It actually, it actually shows at least a service because we don't have anything back from the female half, who is a person who is allegedly still dumping on the property. Long story short, we are at the point now where we are all done. The female half, female half of the party has thrown the daughter and son-in-law off the site when they were in there cleaning up. If you recall, when we did nine commercial, we did this as well. And we stayed this action because the son-in-law and daughter were on the property cleaning up. We found a bunch of stuff that they found it difficult to manage. We actually reached out, Anthony reached out to some companies who were gonna help them for cheap, and then the female half threw them off the property. We were all done having discussions. The day that I cut the notice of unsafe building is the day that I flackered the door and mailed. I've had no response from the female half, we don't know where she lives because it's not in that building. So we are now at the point where we have to do something. As you know, a meeting, two meetings ago, a resident came in, a butter came in, he complained about it. You know, you guys let them know appropriately that we are aware. And now I'm here with my report, notice of unsafe building. I also have the history of the property, which started back in 2000. I also have the history of the property, which started back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one, and this year. Of all the individual times that this property's been cited for garbage and debris, all of them are right here, if anybody's interested. So what your action could be tonight, if you, if you accept and approve that resolution, would be to order the property to be remediated. Sean reminds me today, thank you, maybe yesterday, when the hell did we talk? It's been a long week, that after this order, after you guys decide that the property is unsafe, we have to wait thirty days before we can actually act. Fortunately, the companies that we have on standby to do, to do the cleanup on the property can go at any time. We can get them on the site whenever the thirty days lapses. So my suggestion is, after you guys do that, the clock will start tomorrow because that's the day that we'll actually replacard the building with the order and mail it.
I would say, yeah, we should serve it again, whatever contact information we have. Placard it and mail it to the best service we can.
Yeah, because I don't know where she lives. So I couldn't, I couldn't even attempt to physically serve unless she's on the property. It's a mystery. No.
And I would serve it on the husband or the gentleman.
Yep.
And I would serve it, you know, I'll talk to you, but I would serve it on the, we have an address or the, at least the email address.
Email address of the daughter. That's right. Yeah, that's right. So that's, we'll talk tomorrow about how that'll work, but that's when the clock will start. So your order, the resolution, along with the notice of unsafe building, will be handed to the homeowner, and fingers crossed. All right? So any questions on what is happening tonight, or where, how we got here, and what's going to come next? It's long overdue.
Right.
We've been very, we've been very sort of patient. We really hope that the, that the daughter and son-in-law, they were doing the right thing until it sort of blew up.
Yeah. And this came up again late last year, same time we put the order on Nine Commercial. The only difference was they were working on this property.
They were working on it.
So we didn't proceed to clean it up ourselves, whereas Nine, he wasn't, Nine Commercial, he wasn't working on it. And we remember, we cleaned it up, and now we sent the bill, sending the bill forward to Ulster County to be on the tax levy. So we'll follow the same process here. So I would guess thirty days. I would guess at our regular meeting in September, which would be on the, on the twentieth, is where we'll have to.
We'll be close, we'll be close to thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we'll be there. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
I'll call you tomorrow on that.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. And the only other old business is just a reminder to everybody that our seniors breakfast is next Thursday at nine-thirty a.m. at the Highland Landing. And I know that, I hear Margaret getting phone calls every day of people RSVPing. So I'm sure we'll once again have a, have a good turnout. Okay. We're going to move on to new business. The only thing I had is I wanted to read this letter because I thought it was a good piece of recognition. If you remember, we've appointed Gerardo Theo as our assessor late last year. And he had some, two tests, I believe, that he has to get through, two pieces of training. So we got this letter on July thirty-first. It was sent to Gerardo, and I was copied. It said, and this is from the Institute of Assessing Officers. So it says, it's, it says, "On behalf of the trustees of the Institute of Assessing Officers, it's my responsibility to notify you of the results of your recent exam for Course One, Appraisal Principles and Procedures. This course was held on July seventeenth to twenty-first at the Cornell Seminar on Professional Development in Ithaca, New York. It's my pleasure to inform you that you successfully completed the course and passed the final examination. While the course is graded on a pass/fail basis, your grade for the examination was ninety-four percent." So he's, Gerardo scored very high. And then the letter goes on, the letter from Warren Ruler goes on to say, "You and your municipality should be proud of your efforts, and I hope that you'll continue the course requirements and become a certified, New York State certified assessor." So again, congratulations to Gerardo, and I thought it was important for the board and the public to hear that.
Very good.
Okay. We're at privilege of the floor. Is there anybody here that would wish to speak to the board? Okay. Nobody tonight. So we'll move on, and we'll do the motions and resolutions. First motion is to approve the minutes of July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, and August second, two thousand and twenty-three workshop meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Let's remove. Motion passed. Okay. B, is resolution authorize the payment of vouchers as audited by the audit committee? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on to Resolution D. Okay. Resolution D is, "Whereas the Town of Lloyd desires to send out requests for written quotations and put a legal notice in the newspaper for lawn care, including mowing, weed whacking, disposal clippings, fertilizing, spring and fall cleanup for the following locations," and it basically all are parks and the town hall and the parking lot entrances, "for a three-season contract, and the seasons run from March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and so on each other year through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Whereas sealed quotes must be received before eleven a.m. Friday, September twenty-ninth. Sealed quotes will be opened at eleven o'clock on Friday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. No quotes will be accepted by email or after eleven a.m. on the twenty-ninth. Whereas the Town Board reserves the right to award only certain locations if deemed necessary due to budget constraints, and the Town Board reserves the right to refuse or reject any, and all quotes will reference General Municipal Law, Section one oh three, Best Value in State Financial Law, Section one sixty-three. Now therefore, it's resolved, the Town of Lloyd shall receive sealed quotes for lawn care of various town-owned locations, which will include the signed collusion certificate and a certificate of insurance, naming the Town of Lloyd as additionally insured. The Town of Lloyd requires coverage of one million dollars general liability and two thousand dollar aggregate coverage. And of course, the sealed bids will be submitted to our town clerk's office. Request for quotation advises the bidders of Town Lloyd Recreation Director would be available for question regarding the specific request." Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
But just as a point, our current contract runs out December thirty-first this year. So that's why we have to get this quote back up.
Do these lawn people, they have to be certified to have a fertilizing?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
That didn't change.
Now, we have that number for the budget.
Yep. Any further discussion? Okay. Then can, we'll take a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carried four to zero. Okay. Resolution E, "Whereas the Town of Lloyd Events Committee will be holding an event called Fall Night Out on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, from five p.m. to nine p.m. on the town field. And whereas the Highland Rotary Club will be serving beer, wine, and cider, and Highland Rotary Club will obtain a special event permit from the New York State Liquor Authority in this, for this event only. And the Highland Rotary Club will provide liability insurance for this location and event for the day. And whereas the Highland Rotary Club have requested permission from the Town Board to serve beer, wine, and cider at said event in a designated roped-off area. And whereas the Town Board is desirous, desirous of granting said permission to, to the Highland Rotary Club as requested. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Highland Rotary Club is hereby granted special permission to serve beer, wine, and cider at town field in designated rope-off area on Saturday, September twenty-third, and be it further resolved that the special permission is contingent upon the Highland Rotary Club providing documentation to the town that they have obtained the requisite permits that we spoke about." Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Guerrero?
Second.
Second, Frano, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Motion carried. Resolution F, and this is a public hearing, and I won't read through the entire thing. You have it in front of you, you can read it. But this is basically a, a bond for the grant that we're putting in for the, we did this last year. We didn't have to go, they changed the process. The CFA has, grants have changed the process. This is CFA grant under the WIAA program. And last year, all we had to do was pass a resolution saying that we would bond the match if we had to. Now they want you to actually get the bond resolution in place. And Sean, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but they now need you to get the bond resolution in place when you apply for the grant. So what this is, is this the resolution to hold a public hearing on the bond for the, for the water plant work, which we won't do unless we get the grant. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. But we did submit the grant on August eleventh to the CFA. And I'll kind of skim through this, and as I said, I won't read the whole thing. But whereas the Town of Lloyd Board, on behalf of the Highland Water District, has caused breeding hilarios of Kingston, the engineer is duly licensed by the state to prepare an MPR report dated March twenty-two, three, and the report's filed in town clerk for the increase in improvement of facilities of the district consisting of various improvements and upgrade to the water filtration plants. And again, this includes any equipment, apparatus, connections, et cetera, at the maximum cost, including preliminary costs and, which would include engineering costs, up to four million six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And the town expects all, that all or part of the cost will be financed through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation pursuant to the WIAA or any other source of funding. Any such grant or funds are hereby authorized to be applied toward the cost of the project for redemption of town bonds and notes issued against it, or to be budgeted as an offset to taxes to be collected for the payment. So Town Board acting as lead agent has given the consideration impact of the project and has determined such projects constitute type-two actions pursuant to seeker and environmental conservation law, and therefore, no further environmental review is required. Now therefore, be it ordered that the public hearing by the Town Board be held on September twentieth to consider, at seven p.m., to consider and increase the improvements to the facilities of the water, water district. Further ordered, publish, the town clerk published at least one, once in the Mid-Hudson Post Pioneer. I think that was, we changed that, right?
I talked to one. We, yeah, we just have to update that.
We have to update this. I think we said Southern Ulster Times.
Southern Ulster Times, yes.
Yeah. Hereby designated as one of the official newspapers of the town for this publication. And public hearing substantially formed as Exhibit A, the first publication, and the hearing dated August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the adoption was duly put to vote on a roll call, which we're going to do now. So can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And we need to roll call, Maribel?
Yes. Roll call?
Yeah. You do the grant for her.
Yes. Supervisor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carried. So we'll get that moving. And as I said, the grant's already in. Okay. Resolution G is to amend the working hours of Town Lloyd Highway Department from current summer hours of six a.m. to two-thirty p.m. to the winter hours of seven a.m. to three-thirty p.m. effective Labor Day, nine, four, twenty-three, at the recommendation of Highway Superintendent Richard Clods.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Frano, Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Resolution H, this is to hire Patrick J. Davis, who possesses the qualifications to fill the wastewater maintenance position at the Town Lloyd Water Store Department pending full-time successful completion of the pre-employment physical. Position will be full-time and a pay, a pay, a base rate of twenty-five sixty-two per hour with a start date of August twenty-eighth, at the recommendation of Adam Littman, Water Store Administrator.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Motion carried. Resolution I, "Whereas the town has initiated a project called Louis C. DeStacy Junior Pavilion with the intention of building a pavilion on town property adjacent to the municipal parking lot behind the Methodist Church in Town Lloyd. Whereas the town has solicited requests for proposals to construct a said pavilion pursuant to plans prepared by Sean Williams, Williams Recast. Their bidders were requested to submit a base bid for work as well as price for two alternatives. Towns received three proposals pursuant to said request, and town has assigned Williams Recap Craft for services to be provided for the project, including review of the bid and the bidders." So whereas Williams Recap has reported to the Town Board the result of the bids and the recommendation, has recommended that the town award the bid to Low Bidder, which is Barnraisers LLC, with option two, and the option two was using Douglas fir as the wood. Based on said recommendation, Town's review, the Board wishes to award the contract to the Low Bidder, the Bond Ra, Barnraiser LLC, for the base bid with option number two in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars. Now therefore, be resolved the Town Board, so I need a motion to move this forward?
Motion.
Prino? Do I need a second?
Second.
Okay. You'll take a roll call, please, Maribel?
Roll call, Prino?
Yes.
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 Guerrero?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried four to zero, so we'll start that contract and do everything we have to do from there. Thank you. Okay. Resolution K, and this is one that had been started a long time ago, and we're making some progress finally. And this, "Whereas the, the town has a project, which is, was called Western, Walkway Western Access Enhancements, that involves improvements to shared parking areas for the walkway over the Hudson, Hudson Valley Rail Trail located along Havlin Road in the Town of Lloyd, which includes three phases. Phase three of the project is located to the northern side of Havlin Road, includes the recreation of additional parking space, fifty parking spaces to be exact, and eight thousand cubic yards of fill in existing depression to bring it up to match the Havlin Road grade. Whereas the phases of the project will partially encroach on property owned by Central Hudson, and the town has requested Central Hudson enter into a license agreement to allow the town to proceed and complete the project as set forth. Whereas the town and Central Hudson have negotiated a license agreement in the form here, here to attach and made part hereof, the Town Board has determined that this matter constitutes an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the Town Board intends to act as the lead agency to do all necessary reviews of this matter. Whereas the town wishes to approve the said license as, as attached in Exhibit A. Now therefore, the town hereby declares itself lead agency and do all the necessary reviews. A short-form EAF has been prepared on behalf of the town and the Town Board, hereby determines that the proposed action will have no significant adverse environmental impacts. The license agreement between Central Hudson Gas and Electric and the Town of Lloyd attached as Exhibit A is hereby approved. The supervisor is authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the town and provide copies to the town attorney and the town clerk." Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. We'll move on to vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carried, so we'll get that license agreement signed this week. We'll get it signed. Now, we have to do the short-form EAF now, or we already, basically already?
You've prepared it, you're going to have to need to sign it and put it with the paperwork.
What's that?
Yeah. I mean, you've declared it neck-deck pursuant to the EAF.
Okay. I don't have to go through the whole thing here, then?
Well, if you want to go through with the board, I mean, you already.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we've already filled it out with the help of Andy Learn from CPL, and there's no or small impact on all of the questions asked, so it's, as I said, no adverse impact. So I just wanted to make sure everybody here was aware of that. Okay. So we'll move on to Resolution L. And this is the resolution for sixty-nine North Road that Dave Barton took us through earlier.
Before you, before you do the motion, I think what you should do, except that Dave sort of have noticed that the Town Board is going to have a public hearing. So I think you should open a public hearing and see if there's anybody here that would like to speak on it.
Oh, here tonight? Okay. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing on sixty-nine North Road? SBL eighty-eight dot thirteen dash nine dash three.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Akmuni Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody here from the public to speak on 69 North Road? Okay, so we'll leave the public hearing open, right?
Kennedy, you can close it if you're going to act on it.
Yeah, I would close it.
Yeah, I would close it, then act on it.
Okay, so nobody here to talk on, so we'll move forward then with the, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. So now we'll move forward with Resolution L. Whereas the Town Board has determined that the building situated at 69 North Road in Town Lloyd has been deemed unsafe pursuant to Chapter 44 of the Code of Town Lloyd due dwelling being in significant disrepair and the presence of unregistered motor vehicles, garbage debris, and other refuse, refuse upon the premises. On August 3rd, 2023, the Building Department of Town Lloyd issued and served the notice of unsafe building in order to comply and advise the owner. Town Board has scheduled a public hearing on August 16th, which is tonight, which we just had. And the order determines the building a public nuisance. And the more, Board may direct that the unsafe condition and nuisance be remediated, removed, and further that the Town Board may contract privately or use its own employees to remediate the property. And that the cost of that would be invoiced to the property owner. And failure to pay that invoice in full and in a timely manner would cause the cost of the remediation to be assessed against the site property taxes. To date, the owners of the structure fell to comply with the notice of the unsafe building in order to comply and pursue, again, the Town Code, Chapter 44. When the building inspector of the town issues, or such other person issues, be ordered to enforce the provisions of Chapter 44 to determine the building is dangerous and unsafe to the general public or is unfit for the purposes which it may lostly be used. He shall cause or make an inspection, therefore shall report in writing to the Town Board his findings and recommendations regarding to which repair or demolition and removal. Whereas the Town Building Department has made such inspection and reported its findings and recommendations with regard to the premises and structure located at 69 North Road, the Town Board has considered such report and desires by resolution to declare that such building is unsafe and dangerous and direct the Building Department to arrange for the remediation of the said property, to remove the danger and nuisance to the public by securing said property and removing the garbage and debris and unregistered motor vehicles present on the premises. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. The Town Board hereby determines the property located at 69 North Road in Town Lloyd is a public nuisance and directs it shall be made clean and presentable by removing all debris, garbage, et cetera, and including any non-registered motor vehicles that exist and should be removed, and that all exterior storage should be removed. In the event that the owner does not remediate the premises as set forth, the Town Board hereby directs the Building Department to arrange by contract with an independent contract to remediate the issues upon the premise located at 69 North Road, and that all expenses incurred by the town be billed to, be billed to the, the owner, and shall be levied and collected in the same manner provided by Article, in Article 15 of Town Law for levy and collection of a special ad gloriae and tax levy. And as further resolved, the owner or other interested person shall, 30 days from, of this resolution, to remediate the commission, condition, and remove the garbage and debris littering the premises prior to the town taking action as set forth above. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Guerrero?
Second.
Second, Brino? Any discussion, further discussion? I think we've heard a lot on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Okay, motion carried. Okay, so that was the, the agenda. What we're going to do now is at the August, was it the August 3rd, or July 19th meeting? Go back and look at this. It was at the, it was at the August 2nd meeting where Councilman Mizetti, who's absent again tonight, brought up what he thought was an ethics violation. And Sean got involved, and he asked the Ethics Board to look at it.
He had asked for an opinion on, on an issue regarding a vote for Mr., with Councilman Frano. I had issued an opinion letter to the town indicating that there was a technical violation of the code, but I suggested it be referred to the Ethics Committee for their opinion on it.
Right.
And that's, that was the discussion was at August 2nd. In the meantime, I did refer to the Ethics Committee, and I see two members of the Ethics Committee. They did render an opinion to the Board.
They did, and what I'd like to do is go over that opinion, and I think, John, you, you have to recuse for this. So you have to say.
I suggest you.
You suggest you recuse yourself?
Step out.
Step out.
Yeah, sorry, you're pulling that.
I put the AC on, John. Put the coffee on.
There you go. So if I can ask Raphael and Raphael Diaz and Sean and Steve to come up, and I, I'm going to read the, the letter from the Ethics Board, what the Ethics Board said, and then we can discuss it and decide, you know, whether to accept their opinion and then move forward. So this is, this is from the Ethics Board, and it's the Ethics Board Advisory Opinion 23, 2023-01 regarding Councilman Frano. And it was written on August 11th, 2023, and submitted to Sean, and I got it on Tuesday.
I think yesterday, yes.
Yeah, yesterday. So this, and I'm going to read their actual wording from, they have. This Ethics Advisory Opinion is response to requests submitted on 8/4/2023 by Sean Murphy, Town Attorney, to, to Town Lloyd Ethics Board on behalf of the Town Board. It asks that the Ethics Board give an opinion on possible conflict of interest by Town Councilman John Frano in the town's awarding of a contract to a firm in which his wife is employed or has interest. Specifically cited as Section 10 dash 5 of the Execut Code, Ethics Code, disclosure of interest in legislation and other matters. Whenever a matter requiring execution of discretion comes before municipal officers, either individually or as a member of the Board, and disposition that matter could result in a direct or indirect financial or material benefit to himself or herself, a relative, or any private organization in which he or she is deemed to have an interest, the municipal office, officer, or employee shall disclose in writing the nature of the interest. Other parts of that section stipulate timeliness of submission of the written disclosure. So that was the, the prelude to it. The actual opinion of the Ethics Board is written, is, it's our opinion that Councilman Frano acted properly in regards to the Ethics Code when the contract came up for a vote at the town meeting of 4/19/2023. Because of a conflict of interest with his wife's connection to the awarded company, Councilman Frano rightly abstained from the voting. The details of the contract were read out loud without any further discussions. And you can see that they, they attached the town meeting minutes from 4/19. Regarding the written disclosure in Section 10-5, Councilman Frano was just in a technical violation with some mitigating circumstances. A letter from the supervisor, which is also attached, indicates that Councilman Frano was not included in the discussions in the period leading up to the Town Board meeting of 4/19/2023. As members were aware, members who were negotiating contract were aware of his wife's interest in the company. In fact, Councilman Frano did not even know the vote coming up until the Friday before. While there would have been time for Frano to submit a written disclosure of interest, it was clearly already known that this, thus, this is just an inadvertent oversight. The Ethics Board was asked if the written disclosure of interest requirement should be changed, and our Ethics Board came to no agreement on that. It's up to the Town Board to decide. However, some felt that given a possible violation by town officials in a position to legislate or administer, the Town Board should make them fully aware of this requirement. So I think, and Raphael, I'll let you comment. So I think what, what we're saying is, we should all be cognizant of the actual law, which says whenever you recuse yourself or abstain from the vote, you have to say why you're doing it, and the preference is actual, actually to get it in writing.
Now. So to the Ethics Code, if it's because of a conflict due to the interest, it should be in writing.
It should be in writing. So I, I know, and as I said before, this has happened in the past, and we have not found any writing in any case. And there are very straightforward cases where we can show the example, and I think, I know John has gone back and done some research, and there's examples of people either abstaining or recusing and not giving a written notice. And sometimes not even giving verbal reason of why they've done it. So it's unfortunately a practice that maybe everybody wasn't aware of, and we will make all the boards and committees aware of it going forward. So it, it is unfortunate, and I don't see Mr. Reynolds here from the paper, but it's very unfortunate that an article gets printed slamming somebody's family when they knew it was in an ethics, was reviewing, when they, they knew the Ethics Committee was reviewing it. And, and especially very bad reporting when you say somebody's wife or a family member is the partner, and it is not true. And a good reporter would have went and done the investigation and called the company Nugent-Hausler to find that out. So I'm very disappointed of the way this came about. I'm very disappointed in the unprofessionalism of some in the town, and I'm very disappointed, as I have been in the past, with the Southern Ulster Times. That's my opinion of it. What I'd like to do now is ask Raphael and Steve if they would like to comment on their letter any further. You have to get up there, to the, to the.
Not really. I think the, the opinion speaks for itself. We, we covered it. We got good information. And just to underline what you've said about not having any written declaration, I've never seen it. And we've dealt with a lot of ethical cases where it was just verbally given at the time, recusing. And do what John did, he's, I don't know where he is, he disappeared in the room. That's, that's a proper thing, not even to be in the back of the room.
Right.
Making faces or anything like that. No, I would stand by what we have here. If anyone has any questions?
Does the Board have, well, really, the Board, it's up to the Board.
I have a question.
Sure.
After reading your findings, it sounded like, was there a meeting? Did you guys have a meeting where you met a quorum to make a decision?
Well, we, we did it by email, and we had a quorum.
Because, because I, I have a member said that he didn't know of, he didn't know of.
He was not a member.
Who's the member, Mike?
Haskins.
Bob Haskins, here's the, here's the Ethics Committee, right here. It, it includes Jillindal Cotto, Mark Alia, Kevin Harris, Raphael Diaz, Steve Loback. It was passed on January 4th, 2023 with a five to zero vote. So Bob Haskins was not part of the Ethics Committee. He was in 2022, but not in the vote that we all passed in 2023.
Can I speak to that? I, when I, when I sent out a notice, I did not realize that he was no longer on the Board. So I did send it to him, but he's not on the Board.
Okay.
He's not on the Board. He hasn't been on the Board since January.
And I think also, you told me, Raphael, that Mark Alia recused from.
Yes, he did.
Yes.
So you did the meeting by emails?
By email, and we've done that in the past.
So that's been their practice, Mike. But everybody on the Board was contacted, is what Raphael said.
Yeah, Steve.
On five.
Oh, the one.
Yeah.
Mark recused because of the fact that he's running for office. He didn't think it was fair for him to be on it. But that is the current Ethics Board. It was unanimously approved five to zero in January. So I, I know there was confusion on that, but there should not have been since we all approved the Ethics Board back in January. Any other questions for either Raphael or Steve? From the Board?
Thank you, Raphael.
Thank you for your work, Raphael. And we have to do a resolution to it.
What, excuse me, right now, it's just an advisory opinion. If the Board wishes to adopt it its own, you could pass a resolution adopting and approving the Ethics, the advisory opinion, which would make it a determination of the Board.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay doing that. I don't want to continue to spend time on this because it's a technical wear.
Somebody wants to make a motion to approve and, and adopt the Ethics Opinion.
Can, can I get a motion to accept the advice of the, of the Ethics Committee?
I make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so motion passed three to zero. Again, Raphael and Steve, thank you very much for your work. And we can ask Councilman Frano to come back out if he wants.
They're in there drinking coffee.
I know.
Coffee you wish.
And, and now that we've accepted this, this is now public knowledge. So it can be foiled, it can be whatever needs to be done with it. Okay, and John, you saw the advisory, you saw the opinion of the Ethics Board, since we've sent all Town Board members, and we've accepted the advisement of the Ethics Board moving forward. So I don't know if you want to comment at all, but you're welcome to, since it's public knowledge now.
Good, I'd like, yes, I'd like to comment. First, I thank you for your time, Sean, for your time. I did, when this surfaced, I prepared, in fact, Wendy has had a file, has this on file. It's a response. This was July 17th, 2023, filed with Wendy. In response to Sean Murphy's findings of July 14th, 2023, relative to my abstaining on a vote to enter into contract with audit firm Nugent-Hausler on April 18th, I read the agenda for the April Town Board meeting. I informed the Town Supervisor and Confidential Secretary, my wife worked for Nugent-Hausler. Their response was, was you were not involved with the bid, the review, or the selection process. You are fine, but you have to abstain from the vote. I then asked if I had to comment on my reason for abstin, abstination. I was told no, unless you are asked, then you can. In hindsight, I should have researched the required action defined by Sections 10 dash 2 and 10 dash 5 of the Town Code further. I assure you, my action was purely a technical violation, did not constitute a corrupt or unethical action. There was not any financial gain or benefit to me or my family by the town awarding this contract to Nugent-Hausler. So that was my response on file, and as always, I have something else to say.
Okay.
Since this surfaced, I did a little, little more research because I'm new, and I can't, you can't claim ignorance to the law, I understand that. I did some research, and I said, what has been done in the past? And I didn't, I really didn't have to go too far back in time to find when a member abstained. So I would just like to point this out, I'm not calling for an investigation because it's done. And I think we've all are, are a little smarter. But as I said, due to the highlighted focus on the Town Board's members, members adherence to the town's Code of Ethics, I am compelled to make this point. The minutes of the Town of Lloyd Board meeting held on April 20th, 2022 documents that Councilman Joe Mizetti violated the Code's Ethics 10 dash 2 and 10 dash 5 twice in that meeting. A motion was made by Councilman Akamudi, seconded by Councilman Frano to close the public hearing on the town's adaptive reuse law. The motion passed with three ayes, Mr. Mizetti recused his vote. Another motion was made by Councilman Frano, seconded by Councilman Akamudi, was to implement the adaptive reuse law. The motion passed, once again, three ayes, and Councilman Mizetti recused his vote. Now, as a landowner of several properties in the Town Lloyd, the passage of this law could have a direct financial benefit to Mr. Mizetti. Therefore, the action taken by Mr. Mizetti is a direct violation of the language in the Town Code of Ethics and may indicate a more serious concern. But again, not wanting to waste any more, anyone else's time, just a point should, needs to be made that before you start throwing stones, you should look at your own conduct and your own behavior, and not drag myself, my, my wife, my friends through this. I'm almost done. So that's that. So, and, and I think at the time, I told Mr. Mizetti, we were texting back and forth. And I said to him, I said, look in the mirror before you start pointing fingers. That was what I texted to him. He should have taken his own advice, I think. He should have taken his own advice, I think. Now, in this wonderful article, people do tell me it's a good picture. But as Dave, I know Dave commented on the article, I just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm quoted as saying that this whole thing was silly and ridiculous. Well, I did use those terms, but I did not say reference to our behavior or our Code of Ethics being silly or ridiculous. I was saying to Mr. Mizetti, who took this out of context, but then Mark Reynolds quoted me on it, I said, "The whole thing is silly and ridiculous, that you would even bring this to, you know, to an investigation." So I wanted to clarify that. The other thing was Frano did not respond. Well, I realized Monday late in the afternoon that Mark Reynolds had tried to call me. I called him back Tuesday morning, and he's told, "Yeah, I called you, I want an interview, but I went to press." So, I did not know that I only had four or five hours to respond. I did respond to him, and I wanted him to hear what I've been telling you gentlemen and been telling Sean Murphy. So, I'm glad the whole thing is behind us, there's stuff on Facebook already, which is nonsense, so let them have a free-for-all with that. And again, I apologize that it even had to come to this point, but again, there was no intent to defraud, to make an extra penny or anything else. My wife was totally uninvolved, she does not, was not involved with the audit itself, and in the future, when I recuse or anyone else recuses, be careful, because you shouldn't have to go through this nonsense. Thank you for the time.
Welcome, John, thank you. And just to finalize, one or two other things, since there was a lot of misinformation that's been out on this, I've heard rumors that, hey, this is $40,000 of new expense to the town, and that is absolutely untrue. We do, we've been doing AUDs every year, we're required by the State Office of Finance to do them, and in the past years, I don't have it in front of me, but we've paid anywhere from $18,000 to, down to $8,000, okay? And we've been able to offset some of the costs, because we do three AUDs every year, you know, we do, which is an annual updated documentation. We do three a year, we do one for the Lloyd Development Community, which is a Paris Report, we do one for the Justice Court, and we do one for the overall general budget. We've been able to offset costs with the Paris Report and the Justice Court by having Kendra Menard do it, and we pay her a stipend, which is less than what we used to pay the accounting firm. We also, the final cost, when we did this RFP, the cost from Nugent-Hausler was between $11,000 and $15,000. The cost from UHY, who is the vendor we used in 2022 for the 2021 audit, was $11,000, I believe, I may have that number off a little bit, it was slightly less.
I don't have the number.
Yeah, I don't have that, it was slightly less than the one we accepted. And then there was a second and third one from RBT, which was 67, and it was actually in the paper today, the number was right, but it also said?
Open-ended.
It also was open-ended, and said 67.25 plus hourly rate, and we, they couldn't commit to us how many hours or what it capped was. The one from Nugent-Hausler was between $11,000 and $15,000, and the one from UHY was, I believe, right around $11,000, I will have to check, I don't have it in front of me. But the problem with UHY is, in 2021, we had contract, in 2022, they were already contracted from a contract put in place in 2021, and to be right up front with you, the service we got from UHY was horrible. Okay, it took them from, we had been on them, these things are due in April of every year, and we had started contacting them in March, which they should have done anyway, and we did not get this done until December of 2022. So we were at the end of the year, and what it took to get it done was Margaret, Kendra, and myself, basically project managing the UHY guy, having calls with him and his director from, from the, from UHY on the phone every week, and with Kendra doing a lot of extra work that really was a burden on us. So, very simply, we were dissatisfied with the service, and I think anybody who's dissatisfied with service will look for another vendor or another supplier. I think that happens in everyday life, and we try to make it happen here also. So, we did, we did contract with Nugent-Hausler, I'm happy to say they started in June, and they were done in mid-July, took them six weeks, and we got the invoice, and it was $11,000. So, there's no additional expense added by doing this, which has been the rumor. So, I'm here to quell rumors, and, you know, I'm doing it tonight in a public meeting so that everybody gets that message, and it's unfortunate that the Southern Ulster Times isn't here, so maybe we'll have to submit this to them, to their editor, and see if they'll get it printed. I don't know what more to do other than that, it's unfortunate that Mr. Mizetti was absent again, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Reynolds isn't here, but I want to put this behind us, and I want to move forward and continue getting good things done for our town and our residents, as we have been. So, that's where I'm at with this. I'll ask if there's any further discussion, you already talked, you already spoke. I'll ask if there's any further discussion from Councilman Akamudi?
No.
Any further discussion from Councilman Guerrero? Okay, then, that's all I had, unless anybody has anything else to add to the agenda tonight.
I'd like to say, I'd like to have the board brief attorney-client meeting after the meeting. You can close the meeting, but I would like to have an attorney-client meeting.
So you want an attorney-client meeting, so can I get a motion to move to executive session?
Well, you don't have to do executive, you can close the meeting, we can just have an attorney-client.
Oh, okay, oh, I got it, so we just have to kick everybody out after that, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so can I?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you all for attending.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, God. Oh, my God, every, every two hours.
I thought I was done.
They're just the top ones.